Committee meeting. Hold on, hold on. No, sorry, wrong script. I apologize. Let me get the right one. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convening its workshop meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. We have four topics for today. Facility staffing shortages, licenses, trades, master facility update, R.L. Brown and R.V. Daniels, interim superintendent discussion and timeline, and then we have governance. And I know I have several updates for the board in governance. At this point, though, I will turn it over to Dr. Green to get us started with our two presentations for today.
Yes, we will have facilities license trades. Mr. Paul Sores will start, and then we also lose Vicky Schultz.
Good morning. This brief will cover facilities license trades and also refers back to the agenda items we talked about earlier. You'll see those later. Wanted to start with contractor versus in-house. This was, we presented the brief last November, as you see bottom, very similar information, so it's a little familiar to you. Really, when you look at contractor versus in-house, a mix is really the best of those capabilities. And the reasons why are because they have different strengths. Contractor workforce is, you can expand them or reduce them as needed. Like the agenda item here that you're seeing now could expand it, could also be reduced based on need through contractual amendment action. So you have flexibility with changing them to meet your demand. They can provide, they provide workers that also work outside of the school district on other modern buildings that have modern systems. So we built a brand-new school building, different than what we have up till now. Contractor workforce has worked on similar buildings on other clients, so they have more familiarity and capability with some of those more complex buildings. And so they're able to, we add them to the contract, and they're able to handle them more efficiently than maybe our in-house folks should do. Volatility is also limited with the contractor workforce because they're not our workers, which is just a fundamental difference between having a worker versus a contractor. In-house workforces, they have more knowledge and experience about our schools. They know our campuses, many of them have been here several years, the smaller elementary schools. If we have a, a lot of times a complaint will come in, it's hot, it's cold, the switch doesn't work. You give that to a contractor, you're not necessarily going to get a good result. But if you give it to an in-house person, he's going to go talk to more people, he knows the people there. He'll find out that, you know, maybe a wire came loose or something. And they generally handle those better, quicker, more efficiently than our contractor workforce. So it's really a mix of both that tends to work best, not just here, but other places I've worked at prior in the Navy. That mix is, gives you the flexibility, capability. When you look at costs, HVAC is one of the items here. This talks about HVAC on a square foot. This is the same chart we talked about about six months ago. You can kind of see if you do it on a thousand-square-foot basis, which is really the only way you can do it. If you try to do it on a work order basis, the contractor, they don't really care about work orders. If you have four things to fix at a school, you just give them a work order. If it's in-house force, they're going to want four work orders. So you really need to compare it on a square-foot basis because that's the same no matter what happens. I mean, you look at these, this is HVAC, you can see the lowest price in 1920 per thousand-square-foot was Station Three at 200. Then you go to 2021, the lowest cost was thermostat server at 188. Then you go to 2122, and the lowest was HVAC Station One. So it's going to fluctuate from year to year. As we, like this action of moving six schools, you're probably going to, if you went just to those schools, when you go to a contractor, you'll see a higher cost the first year because contractors are going to go in. When we shift them, they tend to have bigger systemic problems than other schools. And we'll tackle those with a task order that first year. So you'll see a higher cost per thousand-square-foot the first year. And then next year, when you go into more routine maintenance, you'll see the cost go down. The point of the slide is the costs go up and down. Sometimes it's cheaper in-house, sometimes it's cheaper with a contract. It really depends on the situation and the schools you're dealing with at that time. They're essentially comparable.
So this is where I step in. So, as you know, we need to collective bargain our contracts. And so with IBEW, I came to a shade meeting and requested authority for each of our bargaining units. And the recommendation for this school year, for this, for IBEW, was $780,000 essentially, or 6% of their salaries. And so we negotiated throughout the year and landed on 6% across the board for this school year for that bargaining unit. And that was board-approved on March 7th. At the last board meeting, to be clear and transparent, IBEW kind of said that we had lied, right? I don't know how better to say that. So we did pull out some quotes from the negotiations, just so you can see that we did try to carve out. I won't read every line here, but in July of, in July of 2022, we did specifically say, the IBEW said, "I am not willing to break out anyone in this negotiation." So that came from him. In December, our CN, stands for Chief Negotiator, offered to bring the wage increase for employees holding the journeyman license, so that's your electricians, your hars, your plumbers, to give them 9%, whoops, I know not to touch that, and then 5% all up for all the others. So we had a big chunk of money, and we could divvy it up inequitably, right? And so that was a no. And in fact, in January of 2023, the IBEW representative said, "If we were to go in with anything carved out right now, it wouldn't be..." He couldn't get it ratified. So we have tried, I guess is what we wanted to make sure you knew. And all of these negotiations, obviously, are public record, and you could go for a long run and listen to them if you would like to. So this is just kind of a picture of where we are right now with field vacant positions for those license trades. Again, the plumbers, the electricians, and the har mechanics. And then, let's skip forward real quick. So we did do a quick summary on what are people getting hired for, for these positions. And so we pulled this information the first week of May. And roughly, if you were to look at this, knee-jerk reaction would be, in order to get someone in, we would need to start them at roughly $30 an hour. And so if we were to bring in, and I pulled this for plumbers, but basically they're very comparable. If I were to bring in plumbers at $30 an hour, then that costs roughly $75,000. If we were to bring in four of them, which is what the, basically the plumber, or the agenda item is for, that would cost $345,000. So the total, because we'd have to bring in everybody up to $30, and then four new plumbers, that total cost would be $420,000. And then the cost of the contract is $382,000. So they're really pretty close at the end of the day, right? Technically, a little bit cheaper if you do it by this analysis. So, next steps, we will open up negotiations for the new school year. We will ask for additional authority. We can again put on the table, starting $30 an hour for the trades, and see where that can get us. But we do have the two agenda items that are on the next agenda. I did pull out, you had asked about the cost for the HVAC also. And so they are roughly the same on your cost, because they're starting at the same. But you had asked that earlier as to what the cost was.
Yes, I think we're ready.
Questions?
I appreciate your explanation and clarification, because when you're on the dais and you are listening, you are only hearing one side. And I think, for me, anyway, when I was listening, I had these questions, and I didn't know that there were these conversations that kind of filled in some blanks that I had. And so I just appreciate you spelling this out more clearly, for us to get a full picture.
Board Member Joyce.
Yeah, through the chair to Mr. Sores. I think what sparked my interest in this was when we heard the commentary from the IBEW. They indicated that it wasn't just about the salary, that when we contract out, that the contractors are using our vehicles, they're using our gas, they're using our equipment, our supplies, they're using all of that. And is that, is that in the?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. Whether you're in-house or contract, it's the same. Like the salary and the cost you're seeing do not include vehicles, do not include materials. So it's apples to apples, that's always the case. The reason you do what's effectively called government furnished equipment, government furnished vehicles, is to drop your costs. Like, we could make it 100% contractor, but then you'll see that cost come back in the contract plus a markup. So if we have the vehicle, and we have the supplies and things we're buying, it's better, cheaper for us to in-house contract the same labor costs, and then you apply that equally to both of them. It basically washes out. It's really not relevant, even though it sounded very convincing. It doesn't matter whether you're in-house or contractor, that cost is going to be the same to us. It's not going to be any different.
Is there some sort of identification on the employee when they come in, whether they are contractor or if they are a DCPS employee?
Through the Chair, Board Member Joyce, they have a pass. A district employee is going to have a district ID, a contractor is going to have a contractor badge. So you can tell the difference that way. The real point I do want to get across is that we are short people. So when you look, like, on the plumbing, just since last month, the work order backlog has gone up by like 40 or 50. So we literally have 154 campuses, we probably have enough plumbers to cover 70 or 80 of them. We literally cannot cover. And so the contract action will get us the immediate people, if we're successful for any reason, any way, to hiring more people in-house, because we have been continually hiring, we have never stopped trying to hire. It's an important point, we have never stopped trying to hire. We just can't get people to apply, accept, and stay at the current wage levels. That's where we are. If we're ever successful with wage levels negotiations to get, we can turn around and cut these contracts back. We can do that through a contract amendment action. The problem right now is we can't cover. We're literally backlogging work, and we're literally backlogging CRAP in our schools because we don't have plumbers. And that's a real problem for us. We are, we are trying to train custodians in what first echelon plumbing. Like, grab a plunger and run to that bathroom and unclog it so it doesn't flood the second floor, because we literally don't have plumbers. So this is not a new problem, this has been going on for years, just inability to hire. So when you see, even, even the staffing that you saw with HVAC at 14, the number used to be higher. We've had to reduce in-house as we shift contracts, so we can literally get people, and we can't afford to double fund. And if we could afford to fund the contract fully and fund every vacancy, we would keep everything open. The district's not able to do that, there's just not enough money. So the key point I want to leave you with is, these amendment actions can be temporary, they don't have to be permanent, but we need people today.
Board Member Jones.
Thank you. Back to the Chair, Mr. Sores. The, we have, as some of the academies, plumbing, electrical, have, we thought about developing an academy for the different trades and working with the unions to make sure that we generate our own, like we're trying to do with the teachers. You know, we have a teaching shortage, and we have academies at Westside High and Frank, and First Coast, where we are, they're graduating with an A degree and a high school diploma this year. And hopefully, they'll come back as teachers from the district.
So through the Chair, Board Member Jones, we have met multiple times with different unions and trade organizations. And I know that effort has been worked, I think it's through CTE, though, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So I don't know the current status, but that has been talked repeatedly, different ways, different approaches. Try to work through grants, any way we could get that type of thing going, but I couldn't tell you the current status of it right now. I just know that we have worked on that.
One of the challenges is because they're not 18, they can't do certain things. But they can graduate with the first year, I think, behind an apprenticeship program, which puts them at a higher salary when they ask, when they ask. Second point is, how many of the private companies that we contracted with, how many of those companies have union employees?
Yeah, I have to get the, I don't know the answer to that question.
I'd like to know, yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Board Member Willie.
Yeah, through the Chair, kind of coming back on Board Member Joyce's question around the vehicles. One of the other questions was around markup in materials. It was like we're going to see a markup in materials that the district will see, so I'd love to hear that piece. And I think the other question I have is, as somebody who, if I'm a plumber who works for DCPS, I'm working either with or beside a contractor from another place, what is, what is the true difference in what I'm making? Like, I know we looked at sort of average salaries, but if I'm making this and then the contractor's making that, I'm wondering what that, what that looks like.
Through the Chair, Board Member Willie. Well, first, they work together. We tend to assign them in, like, an entire school campus, so you either have a contractor go there or in-house person. So they tend to work separately. Costs can vary. If you look at the plumbing one, for example, I know there was a lot of, there was discussion about, you took the cost of the contract divided by four, and it was something like $95,000. Well, we have a plumber in-house right now that makes more than that. And that's just labor. So labor to labor. And then other plumbers make between 70 and 80, one makes less than 70, who's new. So there are, there are some comparable costs. Typically, the contractor is going to be a little more expensive, only because we can't hire in-house people because we're not paying them. So you're not going to magically get a cheaper price for the contractor, it's the same people you're competing with. There is not going to be a markup on materials and equipment if we provide it. Right. So if we, if we make them pay it, then we'd have to, I'm not sure we can find out what their markup rates are, but there are going to be, there's going to be a markup, because they markup overhead profit and those type of things. But we avoid that by making equipment and materials government furnished.
And that's our sort of way of work is we make materials.
We do, so that's not just common to us, that's pretty common everywhere at other jobs. It's just you want to reduce your costs as the owner. So you provide what you can provide, but you have to provide it.
Got it.
If you don't provide it, then it becomes an issue.
Thank you.
So I'm raising my hand to call on myself apparently here, I apologize, literally. The plumbers are HVAC on the high end in the district. Are they making more than those that are out working for one of the contracted companies? So if you're, you're 25 or 20, what's, what's the most we've got as far as plumbers, how many years of experience?
I don't know the years of experience, but I know I looked at the actual salary, and there was one plumber that was higher, and the other ones were in 70 to 80K range. I don't know their years of experience.
I do have it opened on my laptop over there for years of experience, but they are much, much more experienced. We've been, I've been closely monitoring their compensation per hour, because maybe two years ago, Board Member Joyce was asking me to watch how much their hourly rate compared to teachers. And your starting teacher makes 30, a little over $32 an hour. So I've been consciously trying to monitor that. But you're right, there are very few of them that are making more than some of these.
So I guess my question is, I'm just wondering if those on the higher, do we have a group on the higher end that's just costing us? Are you able to incentivize people to help them understand, if you stay with us in the long run, you're going to make more here than you are in private industry? Are they going to make more in private industry for the high end as well?
The high end will not, especially due to the retirement. So we're finding the high end, the high end or staying.
Aside, I'm just straight salary. Okay.
If we could reach agreement on a particular trade, which we have not been able to do, if we could reach agreement on a particular trade, it would at least be comparable. We have not been able to do that. There's always multiple trades required to be increased in order to increase to a single trade, which you saw from the quotes in the negotiation. And that's, that's the premise of the district's position, is we, if we have to go out and do in-house, we're going to spend more money on this one time upfront, bump everybody up, which I understand from their perspective. I mean, that's what they're trying to do, they're representing the worker, and they're trying to get as much as they can for their people. So, and our people, so it just goes back and forth like that way. But that's the principal thing, if you have to go across multiple trades and raise everyone up to a certain level before you can bring on new people at that level, it's always going to be more expensive.
I guess I just appreciate the in-house, I guess, maybe I was in schools with old HVAC systems, although those were probably everywhere. And I just knew that certain people knew my equipment and could take care of it, because they knew, anytime they came and, like, landed, for example, they knew what the problem normally was going to be, and they knew where to go. And the contractor would have to say to me, "Where's your HVAC located?" And I would have to leave the classroom and go walk the contractor to the room. But now, but I appreciate, again, and I think I've used the illustration, of the contracted people, when they would go just switch out the filter system, the filters. They would just run through the building with those orange and white things, and they would switch out filters. So I, I don't know, but I just, I guess maybe because I had more luck with in-house getting things done for me.
Well, through the Chair, there is, like we say, it's the mix that's the best.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of good district workers in our district. We just can't get them to come and work for us. Literally cannot get the people we need, and it's really hurting our ability to support our schools.
The only other thing that I'd like to add is if we were to bring all of them up to 30, I can almost guarantee you the city of Jacksonville is going to answer us, right?
Right.
And so.
Wage costs.
Right, exactly. So we have to be cognizant of that also.
There's one last question.
Absolutely.
So, ultimately, the folks that are trying to bargain are saying, the reason why there's vacancies is because we haven't lifted everyone up, and we're saying we don't have the funds to lift everyone up. We need to sort of carve out pieces of it. But they're not, we're not willing, we haven't come to an agreement on that. It's kind of this analysis of where we are.
Right. And the cost just to bring those three trades up to $30 an hour is this, which, which is more than half of what the allocation was.
That's just, I think that's just plumbers, right?
This one's electricians, plumbers, electricians, and hars is 365, just to bring those three up. And remember, our allocation was 770, so.
Give me back that after a second, and, and this is just a cost just for plumbers. That's a cost for everybody, the delta, just for the plumbers alone is less, if you just did one trade. But even with that cost, plus the new plumbers, you're higher than in-house.
Any other questions? No easy answers on these, okay.
No.
All right, thank you.
Our next item is a consolidation proposal for R.L. Brown and R.V. Daniels. Mr. Sores?
Yeah.
Get back again.
Something my staff likes to do is the bottom line upfront. So let me show you, show you that what this would achieve would be reduced student stations, where we talked about, you know, in some cases, like with Henry F. Kite, we're bringing, this would, this would add to the number seat reduction. Would improve utilization, which you see in the end, because when we combine schools, we have a higher utilization. We have a cost savings by that consolidation, as we go from two to one, it's less expensive to operate one site. And we have future operational savings as well. And then we also have a requirement to identify, to relocate some staff, which this option allows. Either way, that was going to happen, doing this doesn't undo that. This particular group will be coming from Lake Forest, which is supposed to close this summer in a sale to ability housing. This next slide just shows you an overview of the master facility plan. And you can see the red Xs are the consolidations that are actually planned to occur. So there are, for visibility, just so you can see that there are a lot of consolidations already being planned. R.V. Daniels is located right here, R.L. Brown's located right here. So they are in pretty close, they're five miles apart. Those would be, would be an additional closure of R.V. Daniels to the existing master facility plan layout as you see it. If you look at, you know, logical question is, why wasn't this captured when the whole plan was put together? If you look at this, you can kind of see back when the whole plan was being developed, which was pre-COVID. It was the 2018, 2019 timeframe. Enrollment trends were actually, you know, going up for R.V. Daniels. R.L. Brown was coming down, but then went up the following year. So they were, and they were well over 300-plus students, almost 400 students. So these are pretty full, pretty robust schools, that indicate that we're going to have a declining trend. And their FCIs are not that low, when I think, I think R.L. Brown, I think is 26, and R.V. Daniels is 19. So they wouldn't have popped to the top, when, you remember the scoring matrix that we did, in terms of, you know, backlog, maintenance introduction, and seat removal, they would not have scored very well. But since the plan was put together, you can see a declining trend, and I think you have, may have charts to give you the numbers. But they match this chart. As you see now, based on the latest 20-day count for this past year, this past August, 2022, or 215, 218. So the numbers, and if you look at the enrollment projection, it's not projected to get much better. They basically have proceeded to go on a downward progression in terms of enrollment for both schools. They do not have boundaries, these are both magnet schools, so there is no boundary action. This scatter chart shows you where the students come from. Here's R.V. Daniels, here's R.L. Brown. I think blue are the R.L. Brown students, red are the R.V. Daniels students. And you can see how dispersed they are throughout the entire county. They come from all over. Whether the school is here or here doesn't necessarily make a big difference in terms of distance for the vast majority of students that attend both of these, both of these schools. R.L. Brown, you can see, here's the basic campus. Building one, which is the main building, is 70 years old. Building two, which is smaller, 60. Building 90, which is a smaller storage, flat storage, is 48. Plan, SCI is 26, which is, which is not, I mean, my bad SCI, but 30, above 30 for most of the consolidation schools they work. Would be consolidating to R.L. Brown, because it's, it has the capacity, has the capacity to handle up to 733. R.V. Daniels, that would be the school that would be moving over. You can see Building one, which is the main building, 59 years. The smaller storage building is 48 years, and the SCI is 19. So that's a pretty, pretty decent SCI. It's not necessarily in bad shape, it's just, it's the under enrollment, that's the issue. You looked at, if you're consolidating them, the current 218 enrollment at R.V. Daniels would move over to R.L. Brown, taking them up now to 433, which is an overly precise number. That's where it's at, based on 20-day counts, the real number could be 420, 430, 440. But it'd be about a 60% utilization with 725. So benefits, you would obviously be able to close a school, improved utilization of Brown. This would not occur until August 2025. The reason we're talking about it now is R.L. Brown is going into design for renovation. And how that design proceeds would potentially be impacted by this decision. You know, the plan currently calls for a wing to be demolished. We want to cancel that, keep that wing. Even if we don't do this, it behooves us to keep that wing, because as a swing space, what we're discovering as we go through these moves is that we need more swing space than we may have thought. So we would want to keep that wing. But it would enable us to handle the relocation of R.V. Daniels. So at the end, you would drop 422 seats, you still would have 725 seat capacity at R.L. Brown, and your utilization would be 60. R.V. Daniels would be funded for demolition. Transportation-wise, you can see they're five miles apart, I mentioned earlier, they're relatively close, and they have no boundary. So we would take the transportation support. These schools are effectively supported, because they're magnets, in all of the elementary transportation zones. There's seven elementary transportation zones. They would, if we consolidated, then we would effectively provide the same level of support. So it would really be transparent as far as the ability to get to these schools in all those different locations. So it would really be transparent as far as the ability to get to these schools from all those different locations, you'd still be able to do it. Uh, and it wouldn't really be much, uh, any kind of a cost increase because right now we transport to both of these locations from all over the county. So, uh, and actually, so you can see the difference, they're five miles apart. Scope of work would be, in the current plan, you have plumbing, HVAC, electrical. You can see aesthetics, casework, painting, fencing gates, that's in the plan. We also met with, uh, remember Jones, the board member, really separately, and you identified some other concerns. And we would try to hold some of those into it, if it'll be a curb appeal, make sure we got programmatic requirements as we bring the schools together, understood. Make sure the parking circulation at RL Brown, and also make sure playground equipment, the overall visual appeal of the school is there. So that would be the potential scope going into RL Brown in addition to the MFP. Past maintenance work completed at RL Brown, you know, because it's not, the school itself was going to remain, same thing with RV Daniels. It continued on getting recurring maintenance work, so this maintenance work has been performed at RL Brown. Elevators, HVAC, life safety, roofing. You're gonna, you're gonna see HVAC and roofing, the kind of things that really can prevent schools from being held, those always bubble to the top and are funded. Other smaller work, you know, flooring, uh, stage, which are important, but won't necessarily stop or tend to get lower priority at schools. So the total was six ninety-eight, so this would come right out of the deferred maintenance backlog. As we, when we go in to do deferred maintenance project at RL Brown. Look at the overall, the MFP budget for RL Brown, just under six million, five point nine oh eight. We escalate that budget because of inflation, remember that's a twenty eighteen, nineteen number, we expect it to be closer to eight million dollars. So if, if done alone, part of the current plan, you would see a shortfall of two point two million. Now, if you go into moving RV Daniels over, then, um, you can remove the partial demolition cost. Because we would keep that wing, it's two forty-five, you could remove the deferred maintenance for RV Daniels, that's funded in the plan, so that's two point eight million. You add a demolition cost for Daniels, so that would take away six hundred. The net of these two numbers, that comes out to two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar surplus. So you could fund this within the funding within the MFP, it's just a more efficient way to operate. And if you go out into the future, when we did closures, you're, you're looking at, you know, from five hundred thousand for a smaller school up to a million dollars a year savings, per year, in terms of principal, security guards, other staff, labor costs, and things associated with any site. It's the any-site cost. For these, for this level of school will be about seven fifty, so over ten years, by having RV Daniels closed, you're looking at seven point five million. And then there's further lifecycle maintenance beyond, FCI goes five years, if you go out to ten years, another six point five million. So you could have an additional fourteen million above, but this is real, close to the sled. This is sometime in the future maybe, right? Timeline, just that it would occur, you can see we're progressing through, these are all the timelines for the RL Brown design awarding. We would look at substantial completion, um, probably towards the December timeframe for RL Brown, twenty-four. And potentially performing the consolidation, August twenty twenty-five, as mentioned. That gives you a rough idea of timeline, over two years away at this point. That's it, so I'll be opening up to any other questions. Again, this is conceptual, we're looking for some conceptual leadership guidance, so we know what to do. You know, potentially, this could occur again in the future, as we look at the number of schools we have. Other campuses that are, that are running below three hundred, below two hundred, but this is the first one that really pop up. Um, and there's clearly a benefit to doing it, but it's an additional closure and consolidation, uh, beyond the current MFP.
Board member Cardi, you have a question?
Yes, I'll give the chair to, uh, Mr. Sores. Has there been any discussion about what we're going to do with the RV Daniels property after the building is demolished?
Yes, what we, what we wanted to do within the plan as a default was fund the demolition and leave the greenfield. And then the greenfield could eventually be repurposed or sold through an ITB invitation to bid. That's, that's, that's the default, unless some other, you know, we had Lake Forest come along, wanted to do ability housing. We had Public Library of Jacksonville come along, wanted to open a branch in Brentwood. Now, if we get some specific purpose that is beneficial, uh, what we don't want is a repeat of the complaint you always get about the school as you go over I-ten, school number four, that was closed fifty years ago, and we always get a call, how come that school's in such bad shape and the school district left it? We sold this fifty years ago, but they always call us, right, about it. So we want to, we don't want to have that kind of a blight left behind, so we, uh, i- if all else fails, RV Daniels, we demolish, left as a greenfield and potentially resold. We, we really can't hang on to land that we don't need for long, because it's a liability. It gets trash, it gets all kinds of problems.
I appreciate the, uh, information on the enrollment of the two schools. But also, we would have to communicate very effectively, so the community knows that we are making a change in what was presented in the, uh, bold plan that was presented, uh, several years ago. In that particular neighborhood that I represent, we're losing, they're losing two schools. RL Brown, I mean, uh, RV Daniels and Suzie Tomlin, they're both adjacent, I don't know why they built two schools like that, right behind each other. But they were two neighborhood elementary schools.
Right here.
Yeah, we're losing both, so I just want to make sure that we have, uh, we take the time to inform the community. Again, that one, this is the proposed change, and that what would happen to their two schools. Although RV Daniels is not a neighborhood school, Suzie Tomlin is, and they are right in the same block.
Yeah, to that point, I want to thank the administration for having a robust conversation, I see some of the questions and considerations in the, in the, in the deck, which is great. To board member Jones's point, I think it's, it, it's, it's something that we, it's going to have to be a marketing effort to make sure folks understand. Because what I know is that folks don't know magnet versus neighborhood, they just know the schools down the street from them, and now that school's not there anymore. So I think we have to do a, a really good job of making sure that. And I think that also, if we look at this map, we, we do start to see many of the schools in, in our Black African-American neighborhoods that are being closed down. A lot of that has to do with other factors, whether it's, you know, uh, how, homes that are being built there and whatnot. But we do have a system where folks can go to any school, so it comes back to a point we bring up as a board a lot. What is the, what is the root cause of the, the decline in enrollment in these schools? That were once flourishing at five hundred, four hundred students, was it the gifted piece that drew people in and now that's not as attractive anymore? Was it the principal, was it the leadership, was it the school grade, like figuring out what those root causes are? Because as Sora said, this is, this is the first of many that we're going to have this conversation about, maybe not to this point. But those are the kind of things that I would love for us to really dive into as we get in, involved in this. And it may be time to really pull back out the master facilities plan, now that COVID happened, now that all these other factors are taking place. We have a number of, of new schools that have popped up around that area, the Kips, the Ideas and others that have popped up. So there's a lot of factors that are included in this, so it may be time to have that larger conversation.
To your question, to your point where, for any school that opens anywhere up on these clusters.
Right.
Can draw them right there.
Right. And, uh, no more point through the chair, I, I mentioned curb appeal, I mention that a lot because we know how parents and families decide on things. They are driving down Gold Fair and see a brand new building, they're going to say, what's going on in there? That's where my kid should go, regardless of what academically is happening there. And that's one of the things, RL Brown's kind of tucked away, but you can see it off of like what MLK, as you're going through. So there are some things we can do if this is the case, that's why I mentioned playgrounds, because when you drop by a nice playground, you don't know, which school is that? You see a nice building, you see the nice curb appeal. So there are things that I think we need to consider as a board and as a district, as we're making decisions about facades of schools or painting schools, things like that. Because those little pieces help, um, a lot. Question though, um, we talked about, you, I noticed many of the schools are getting the double entry, I think, piece. What is RL Brown supposed, do we know in RL Brown's getting that, or is that happening with that school?
Schools that had major projects within the first three years would have that requirement folded into the project.
Got it.
So it's going to happen when you do the renovation.
Okay, because I'm thinking about the facade of that building, and if you add that piece, it could be an opportunity to do that.
That's when that'll happen.
So, looking at RV Daniels and RL Brown, with the enrollment being two eighteen at one and two fifteen at the other for this current school year, and you've got people coming from all over the city. I would be curious for a bring back to know how many neighborhood students attend those. Of those two hundred and eighteen or two hundred and fifteen, how many are, are neighborhood students that would be impacted by this closure?
To the chair, uh, board member Hershey, so going back to the original priority zero, the original boundary.
We have to.
Of that school, if that's possible.
It is possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious, like who currently, I mean, are, I'm just, who currently are enrolled? Are a hundred of them neighborhood students, or, I, I'm, I'm just curious to know the impact of the number of students attending within that neighborhood, that would be their, their neighborhood school. And I just would also like to add that, looking at the dispersment of the population from around the city that attended. Knowing the growth of charter schools in my district alone, I think that we could chalk up a lot of that. Reduction in attendance to charter school growth, I mean, that would be my very first guess.
Vice Chair Pearson.
Thank you. I know just enough to be dangerous on this, but, um, just having done Leadership Jax, we did a whole, um, presentation on the east side, out east. Um, I've been following that in the news, and I know that that is an area that's growing and getting a lot of investment. But I don't know my geography well enough to know if either RL Brown or RV Daniels is considered in that out east area, and I have a follow-up question. That's what I was thinking, so a suggestion would be as where. Just a suggestion that there, since there are community organizations and community members who are actively working in that area. We may, um, lift Jax as one that comes to mind. Um, if we haven't engaged already, um, engage some of the folks that are working and, and bring them into the conversation. I think would, would be smart and respectful, um, thing to do.
And my, my comment is a separate and aside, I waited till the end, um, not specific to RV Daniels and RL Brown. But as you showed the map, um, with the dots on it, um, I would like to start putting, um, an item on, um, for consideration with the board, that when we talk about legislative next year, that we work with some of our friends in the charter community about, um, establishing, um, some type of parameter that you don't build a school around, uh, a certain mileage or something like that. I will say, um, I have talked to friends in our charter community who now have had that happen to themselves. So they're feeling it themselves, so I think that we could, we've talked some about joint legislation between charter community and the district. I think this is something that we might could find some common ground on, because they don't want to be built on top of now either. Um, and so I think that's good conversation moving forward to help make sure we don't have dots on top of dots. Um, but anyway, so. I know, we're, I, we're going to use Mandarin, Mandarin is the case study as to why to have the conversation. Mandarin is truly the case study. Case study, we should have had this conversation for you, yeah, twenty years ago. Um, other, other questions? Board member Willie.
Yeah, through the chair, to board member, Chris's point, I think, uh, Lift Jax has been super involved in some of the, the schools around, um, that area specifically. Like John Love and some others, they've done a good job. And thinking about theme, I think, um, um, Miss Peak and her team have done a really good job too, thinking about gifted versus other pieces, and even adding a component, I know RL Brown's thinking about an agricultural component, they have a garden and other things. And they got some grants and some funds from, from the public education, wanted to do some of that. So I think there's creative ways to do it, I think that, but I'd still think that there should be, we need to do a deeper analysis on the, some of the root cause pieces to, to figure things out, because if we can determine some of those, we can go into a conversation with our charter partners or others. Say, hey, this is, this is duly beneficial for both of us to be able to do this in the right way, based on this data that we're seeing right here. Include their data too, um, because this map is, is interesting, and I asked, I was like, give me the heat map on where people live, because and I never thought it would look like this. Like, those schools are smack in the middle of the city, but you got folks from everywhere coming there. So it just, it is, it is interesting to see it laid out this way. And I think we should have these conversations around other schools. When a charter comes in, in front of us, we should actually pull the map potentially to say, look at the heat map where we are and figure out where it goes, because it would be even more interesting to look back two, three, four, five years ago, look at the heat map and then see where the, the dots start to get less, less concentrated.
Yes.
So.
That would be working as a school system versus a system of schools.
All right, any other? All right, um, thank you so much for your work on this item. All right, we are going to move on to our third item, which is, um, interim superintendent discussion and timeline. You may recall, uh, when we had our, um, meeting, uh, in regards to Dr. Green's contract. Um, that, we did have this as an item, but after we dealt with the contract, certainly, um, we all needed to pause a minute. Um, and so we have, but we are in a situation now where I want to just give some mindful things on dates. Dr. Green goes into surplus after June fifth, on June sixth, we actually have a board meeting. Not to state the obvious, but we actually do need a superintendent, that's a board meeting, um, state law will require that we need that. So we are in a bit of a, a time constraint, um, to go ahead and move forward. Um, and so, um, I wanted to bring this forward to you, uh, for the notion of could we potentially hire someone for a shorter period of time, so that we can then have some discussion around um, where are we headed in the long run, so we can be thoughtful as to how we're proceeding? I think there are a lot of us with different thoughts about how to proceed, and we need to have time, um, to, to have those conversations. But also, after we have these conversations, to reflect, figure out where we need to go collectively as a board. Um, and so, um, I, I want to make sure I make it very clear, also today, this is not set up to take an action in any way. This is only for discussion at this point. My thought is, depending upon what happens today, that potentially we call for a special meeting next Tuesday um, to actually take an action at that point. I will let you know, and Mr. Poole, if you want to jump in, I got a call from the Office of General Counsel, just for calendaring purposes, the reason I say the twenty-third. And I'm not married to that, but Office of General Counsel needs to have a shade meeting with us in regards to some litigation. Um, do you want to, and the thought was, if we need to take an action on this, we could put two, you know how I am about grouping meetings together? So that we can hit multiple items while we're in the building, if we need multiple items. And there is a sense of urgency around this item for OGC as well.
Yes, uh, thank you.
Separate and aside.
Thank you, non-chair, and to the board, through the chair, to the board as a whole. There, there are certain magic words in the statute that I will just read. In accordance with section two eighty-six point zero one, line, subparagraph A, to Florida statutes. I wish to advise the board, uh, that, um, the Office of General Counsel needs the board's advice concerning a matter of litigation, and for that reason, is asking for a shade meeting.
Um, the other reason this blends into the interim superintendent is that the superintendent determines, negotiates, is, is a pivotal person in the negotiation piece with this said litigation. Um, and it's hitting at the same time, we're under a, a situation where we need someone in place to assist with that as well. Um, in, in addition to the June sixth board meeting. So, uh, with that, um, I will open it up for further discussion. But I just thought I needed to set a stage for you all in terms of the timelines, time constraints, the fact that we have this item looming overhead with OGC. And we need a superintendent to assist with it very quickly, um, as well. Thoughts?
Vice Chair Pearson, then let me come over, I'm, 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 I'm open, I'm open on times. Um, I, I think OGC would like to go with nine, um, and we could go after that, but if we need to, depending upon what the discussion is. I just looked at the calendar in advance, Wednesday is already fully booked with board policy and another, uh, shade meeting in regards to a personnel item. So we're kind of tight on that day already. Vice Chair Pearson, I apologize.
It's okay. I asked this question before. So I'll ask again, because I don't think I've gotten an answer. I, it, the, the way I understand the timeline is, Dr. Green is staying through the second or third of June. And then will be on leave, will be on, on leave.
and then will be on leave, will be on, on leave but still on staff through July eleventh. Typically, when Dr. Green is not in her office, um, our deputy rolls into the acting position. Why would we not do that now? Why would we do something different, given that Dr. Green will still be employed from June second or third through July eleventh? Why would we not use the deputy to cover that space? And then talk about an interim starting July, we wouldn't talk about it on July twelfth, but talk about the starting date for the interim being July twelfth, or sometime like that.
From a technical standpoint, the contra-, the, what we assigned, I believe that the superintendent will be in surplus, not go into surplus, correct?
She can delegate.
And so I don't believe she can delegate from surplus. She normally delegates, that, it's not a board policy, she delegates who she wants in charge when she leaves. When she's having her, if she has a doctor's appointment, she delegates, different superintendents have, she delegates to the deputy super, some have delegated to the chief of staff, some have delegated, I've seen human resources, delegated human resources. So I'm, I'm just concerned about the realities of if she is in surplus, whether she has the authority and I-
When does she go into surplus?
On June fifth, at the end of the day, on June sixth.
So why couldn't she delegate someone before she goes into surplus?
She will.
And, and through the chair to the board.
And if we can, we may have a great solution. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the solution, but my-
And I'm not, I'm asking questions because I don't understand the process, and I don't know where to find the answers to the process other than to ask them.
Through the chair to the board as a whole, and you know, um, labor employment's my background. Candidly, I've never run into what we're referring to as surplusing before. I don't know if that's a common thing statewide with school districts, I've just never encountered that. In, in Florida statutes, there's really no, not that I've ever seen, anything that really contemplates surplusing as we're talking about it. I think as a matter of contract pursuant to the, the retirement agreement that was reached, that surplusing is what we're talking about, um, that she is going to be surplus. I'm not aware, as a matter of law, of anything that would prohibit her prior to shifting over under this provision of designating someone to act. At, at least un- until July, I'm trying to remember the last date, the, the last date of her employment with the district, for someone to be designated as acting in her, in her absence. So, um, I, hopefully that answers your question. Not aware of any law statutory or otherwise that would prohibit that.
Any other thoughts? Oh, Board Member, I know, okay.
I feel like the district is in a very interesting place right now. And you know, we have a lot of items that we are going to be asked to discuss and talk about. And, um, shade meetings included and all of that. So we have these investigations, and we have litigation, and we have all of these things that are on our pipeline now. And also, I think an important aspect to all of this is the opening of schools. We have a big job, a task, to make sure everything is in place. When we talk about opening of our school system. I'm just wondering if, because of everything we have going on, if there's a, you know, possibility that someone from the outside can come in in a temporary sense of the word, who has some extensive, you know, if there's someone out there that has some extensive knowledge, background in how to do this work, to really be somebody separate from the district. To sort of guide us through that. And maybe that's a shorter period of time, maybe it's a longer period of time. But I guess for me, I would be a little more comfortable if there was someone out there that is qualified to do that work, that we maybe shift that outside of the district. Just because of, you know, the litigation and all the pieces that are associated with that. And I think it would just be good for public perception for, you know, us to do something in that direction.
Board Member Pearson.
So I think we're kind of looking at two things, right? So there's an immediate need, and then there's a future plan. And so, and I also feel like the board needs to lead on this. I personally am uncomfortable with having the superintendent designate somebody when, you know, I, I see her as being retired on, I know there's a technicality that we can discuss about it being June or July, but I think the board needs to lead and have someone in place that we have selected and are confident in. So for immediately, um, I'm fine with looking at somebody in-house. Dr. Kresner comes to mind for me, um, just as someone who can cover us. And I would say, uh, having a conversation maybe that says not to exceed six months, but that gives us time because I know from the work that I do outside of the, this job, that if, depending upon what kind of search we do, it's going to take six months to place somebody. The way I look at it is that, um, during that time, the investigation is starting and it's in process. So by the time someone lands, there's information, you know, that can be done. But I think that, to me, I think we're looking at two things. I think we're looking at a, somebody for, between now and not to exceed six months, to kind of give us time to then figure out what leader, what type of leader do we need, uh, moving forward after that. So I agree with bringing somebody, but I'm thinking, I think there's two, there's an immediate need and then a future need. And I just see those as two separate pieces.
And I, I normally wait to lead, and I'm gonna go ahead and say mine. I, I want to concur with, uh, Board Member Hershey, that I see an immediate need. And that we, anytime a superintendent change happens, there's a lot of dust. Um, I do believe Dr. Kresner could help settle the dust down. I also am very concerned about the opening of school. And what I do know is that Dr. Kresner knows the systems in the district can get the buildings open. But that would also give us a couple of months, because I have actually made calls. There are some retired superintendents out there who might come for six or eight months, but they, they're not going to come tomorrow. Or it may be that we want to find the long-term person, I don't know. I mean, there, there are a couple of different options out there, one of them, which you've talked about, to bring somebody in. But I, I do think that Dr. Kresner could get us through so that we can have those conversations that, that you're talking about. Because I do see an immediate need. Principals, the minute you close schools for this year, the next day as a principal, you walk in and you start doing a text, you start counting equipment, desk, enrollment, scheduling, whatnot. Um, and we're very fortunate that we have somebody, you know, and Dr. Kresner, who has done all that work and can get us back open and give the board some time to talk about exactly what you're talking about, uh, Vice, uh, Board Member, um, Cari.
Um, to the chair, so yeah, that's, I want to try to understand what we're, the grand scheme of things here. So it would be my preference to, I don't know, six, I think six months to me sounds like a longer period of time, but-
Up, 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 up to, so it could be, it could be shorter.
Yeah, so, um, to not be, I think our first order of business is to find someone that's wants, like, what, um, what Chair Coker said about a retired superintendent that wants to come in from the outside, be able to help us restructure, deal with the systemic issues we're facing, and then also give us time to look for somebody that's a longer-term solution. Because I think that if we have someone that comes in on an interim basis that help us, help us fix the problems we're facing, that also makes a longer-term superintendent position a lot more attractive. So, the question to me is, okay, well, how many candidates, have, have any of us had the opportunity to have conversations with potential candidates that want to come in on an interim basis? If that is the case, because I know that Mr. Poole had reached out to the board. And then look, let's look at that timeline and see, okay, well, how much time do we need as a board to review these potential candidates? And when can we make a decision? But yeah, my, all of my concerns are the same, I think, as most of us. And I'm also concerned about what it looks like forward-facing, and to make sure that we're in front of this as a board, showing that we are taking the right actions to fix problems that the public is seeing.
What would you want to see immediately for every?
That's a lovely question.
I mean, like, by June sixth, I mean, that's the, that's the big question.
That, yeah, that, we literally have it June sixth, and we have litigation, and one of this cases is major for me.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's why I was asking the question, if we, if we as individual board members have somebody in mind that's outside of the district, then I think we need to have that discussion.
Um, Board Member Jones.
Thank you, uh, first of all, uh, through the chair. I think Lauren and I have been through this before. One thing that I would correct, we don't have an interim superintendent, we have a superintendent. That's, that's making, they can make all the, we have to have a superintendent. It's not an interim, they, that person is the superintendent during that period of time. Two, I'm just not sure what date, if you're talking about June the second is her last employment date, then we would need to have a superintendent in place by June the thirtieth, am I correct?
Through the chair, through the chair, uh, to Board Member Jones. We, we'll have to have somebody certainly on June the sixth, when we have a board meeting. And, and what I was getting at is, I think that, that could be satisfied a couple of ways. One would be, and I think you have, it gives you more options. One would be, well, I, I, I think that Dr. Green would, prior to that date, be able to designate, say, Dr. Kresner, to sit in her absence up until the July date that Dr. Green leaves. That would be one option, whether you want it or not. The other is the option of between now and then, you know, hiring somebody as the superintendent, at least, at least for, you know, the six-month period or what have you. So I think you would have either, and whether that's Dr. Kresner or somebody else. So I think those would be your options for the June sixth.
Thank you, through the, the chair. Given the, the short period of time, I mean, I think we need someone who is in-house, that's made with what's going on in our district, with our students, uh, that can provide the continuity we need to ensure that we have a smooth as possible transition in preparing for the end of school year. And perhaps we can look at something different as we move forward, but right now, I think, uh, that's what we've got.
Board Member Will.
Yeah, I think it's, um, almost inconceivable to think somebody's gonna come in and get up to speed by the time we end school and start school. So, I, I think that we have to have somebody in-house for, that's for that period. And I do think we need to give ourselves space to not rush a process, to make sure we get a person in, in the seat that truly can understand how to navigate the waters here and you all in around the state. So, and I think that's gonna take, um, considerable, that's considerable amount of time. And to Board Member Chris's point from earlier, others are doing the same thing and having to go, continue to go back out and, and source. So if we can do it the right way and get a really great pool, then I think we set ourselves up. And I think we have people in-house, Dr. Kresner being one, who could get us there. And I think too, I don't think we should put, it's kind of hard to put expectations on somebody who is in that seat, who's not going to be the long-term superintendent to make all the systemic changes. I mean, it sounds great, but I don't know if that's, that's going to be very hard to do. And I think you want somebody who's really, can really take in all of that information and really make the best decision for us moving forward, who's also going to be in the seat to kind of see it through.
So, my question is, it sounds like there, there's like three different steps to what we're talking about. There seems like there is a desire for the board to do an in-house interim for a specific amount of time, then going and getting an interim for a specific amount of time, and then going and getting a superintendent. I mean, that's sort of-
May I, when I'm here?
Well, I, I think yes, I think what, what we're trying to do more than anything is provide some stability right now, so that the board can go look at what other districts are doing. I, I went ahead as board chair, my, my deal is always be prepared for anything that comes up, so I go do lots of homework. There are consulting companies out there that will help you hire an interim for a period of a six months to eighteen months, or they'll hire somebody that you want to keep for ten years. There are some retired superintendents out there, some of them are only willing to come for six months. Some of them have said, you, you're not going to get me for two months, because I've got some other obligations right now. There's, you know, there, there are a lot of different things that could happen here. I think the whole point of this is to find someone to give us, and I'm going to use your term, some space to have all those conversations so that y'all can task me with, I want this consulting company to come present and tell me what's out there. There's also a district I just learned about that just literally put an application out and said, if you're interested, two weeks from now they're due. And then we've now heard that another district has reopened theirs because they didn't get quality candidates. So there's, there's, there's so much, and this, uh, just finding time to get the decision right.
Right, well, I mean, I don't disagree with that. But I do think that, given the circumstances that we're in, we've got, I don't know that this district is necessarily in the greatest position to hire a quality superintendent, just because of all of the issues we have going on with the grand jury report, with not reporting this, and there's just, there's just a lot of things that are, kind of weigh us down. And I do want to get our district in a position where when we do go out for a superintendent to be our permanent superintendent, that we're in a really good spot, where we can actually draw the very best quality candidates. And so, my concern is we're in a place right now, and it could look like we're just holding it together for a minute. But to do this long-term is not really fixing any problems, it's just holding things together. If we could get someone to come in that is qualified, that has experience, not willing to do it forever, but someone who could come in that could fix systems and help with the litigation pieces, and that just really is not tied to the district, that could, and that could get us to a position where when we do that superintendent search, we are in a really, really good space for quality candidates. And so that's sort of like why I'm here, you know, in my mind, that's the way I'm thinking about this. So, there's three steps to that, to me, it could be. And I'm wondering if there's opportunity, we're gonna, we're talking about like the desire, the timeline right now, but if there's an opportunity for us to, you know, sort of, when we reconvene, is there any other, you know, we could stay in-house, that could be great, that might be the decision of the board. But is there any one else out there that's willing to come in at the beginning of June? Just do a few, little bit of work, so we can just transition from one to the other to get us where we need to be for a superintendent. So I mean, that's just another, uh, thought pro-, you know, it's my thought process. Because I mean, at the end of the day, I think we really want to have someone come in to get us in a really good position to hire our next superintendent. Those are my thoughts.
Board Member Pearson.
So, I still think we have an immediate thing we have to decide. So we have to have consensus with what do we want to do from now, not to exceed six months. not to exceed six months, it might be three months or six, but I think we have to make that decision. And then what I would like to recommend to the chair is, um, that we have a date in June where we bring somebody in from the outside, I don't know if it's somebody from FSBA, but somebody who has experience in searches to help this board have a conversation, because I'm hearing a couple of things. If there is a desire for the board to get someone specialized, who has a skillset in reorganization, who can look at, um, the, you know, the investigation report, and who can reorganize, that might, that's a skillset that you're specifically looking for, and I just think we need to have a conversation of how do we wanna go? Do we want, is, is that important to majority of the board or not? And then we can determine what that looks like. Because too, I think Board Member Joyce has made a good point, someone who comes in and does focused reorganizational work is painful, and they are not usually somebody who stays around much longer, but they certainly prepare the way for somebody else. But I think we do need to have somebody come in and guide us in the conversation, so that we can have consensus of what does that next step? So to Board Member Joyce's point, is it somebody then who comes in for X period of time with this specific goal in mind? And then doing something much broader, or do we just wanna go out and do a broad thing now, but have somebody who's got that skillset when they come in? So that'd be my recommendation, and I think we need someone from the outside to lead us in a discussion.
So let me, I'm gonna rephrase and build from this, and we can all kinda work around, and I'm very happy to bring someone in, cause it's board chair, I I wanna participate in the discussion, I don't wanna be leading it, you don't get to say as much when you're leading. So what I'm hearing as, as a first step is to take steps, and I'm gonna ask a couple of questions shortly here, for us to identify, uh, someone potentially in-house for the time being, not to exceed six months, is what I'm hearing. And that, we go ahead and do that to, to deal with our current issue, cause part of why we need to also figure this interim is they're gonna be the ones that are gonna negotiate this case in the long run, so we can invite them to come to the shade meeting. But to do that shade meeting, you have to actually identify every person who's going to be in the room. So there's that, um, and so, but it would be helpful for that person to be here, but period not to exceed six months.
Can I just add?
And the reason I say six months, I'm just, I just, because I have a, it could be two. Is that if there is a search, it takes six months to do a search.
I mean, if you're.
But it could be two.
But it could be, depending on what you do though, so if you do up to six months, you can.
You're not obligated.
You're not obligated, but if we were doing a bigger search, it would take six months.
Depending upon, and then what I'm going to do is start making calls, like I said, I already talked to a couple of recruiting companies and things like that, but I'll, I'll go back to FSBA probably for this, to potentially bring someone, not to potentially, to bring someone in to lead discussion on what are we looking for, what are, what would be our next steps in light of that, and what type of timeline do we need to make those next steps happen? So that would happen probably at the second board workshop in June after agenda review, is when that would happen. Is that what I'm hearing from you all? Cause depending upon, I'm, I'm getting nods, I'm getting nods across the board. Okay, so in order to make number one happen, we actually do, and, and I will say, I am in concurrence, concurrents with Board Member Hershey, I am uncomfortable with the superintendent delegating authorities while she's in surplus. I also believe for the public that the board needs to lead and needs to go ahead and, and, and move forward. That's just a personal, not, I mean, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, that's me. But, um, for us to identify that individual potentially in-house for that period of up to six months, I do need to call a special meeting. We would need to take an action for us to give legal the authority to create that up to six months contract. And we have, um, Pat Willis's contract in the past, there have been, Nancy Snyder was also technically a shorter term. We have a couple of contracts that we can use as a basis, um, but we would need to, um, and the other thing is, if you go in-house, that person needs to figure out how to delegate their current responsibilities and needs some time to get that done as well. There, that, you know, there's a reality that everybody in this job's doing about three jobs, everybody in the district.
The chair, so we're looking at between June fifth and that second week of July, we have six weeks. Are we looking at making a decision or having enough people to come in and potentially make a decision? No, based off of, I guess, let me rephrase. Um, um, I've got two different things going on, left brain, right brain. Are we looking at the six-month window from the June fifth date, or are we looking at it from the six weeks out, July? From June?
Doing June fifth, I'm starting, time clock's starting.
Okay.
Starting, okay, good.
Okay.
I understand the timeframe, uh, you know, wanting to get a quality super, uh, interim superintendent. I don't think it's, we, I think we could probably do that a lot faster than six months. And I, I feel some urgency in bringing someone from the outside in, and I think six months for me is too long, I do understand if we're gonna go through a process with a recruiting firm and, and everything, I just don't know that it has to be that difficult. Just wondering if there's any appetite to, you know, if we know that there are, you know, three or four, five superintendents, you know, retired that maybe have the skillset to do the reorganization, do we even need to go to a firm to, to do that, or can we do one, and if the first option, you know, if there's, could be some potential candidates, um, presented, and the board looks at them and says, no, we really just wanna go to a firm to have FSBA involved, because again, that's an additional cost, which we could probably not have to do that if we looked at the candidates ourself and just said, you know, this looks like somebody that could do the work, or maybe we could even do our interviews ourself, because again, this is not a long-term position. This is just somebody, if you have the skillset to come in, to do the work that we need to be done. And, and the piece for me, the most important piece for me is that that the, it's outside of the organization, and I don't mean any disrespect to anyone when I say that, but there's alliances, and we know that within an organization. And I think we develop friendships, and we have, it's human nature. And when we, we're doing the, the, the work that we're doing, I just feel like someone with a fresh set of eyes, very objective to what is going on, and not really any ties, is super important in getting us through that piece.
Yeah, through the chair, I, I think we have to have some sort of additional time to talk, cause I, I keep hearing the word reorganization and things, and that was never my intent, I didn't I didn't, I didn't know that's where we were going with it, so if that's the case, that's a very different conversation than, than I would be having with getting someone in who would be able to sort of maintain and make sure that we get the right way. And I, I mentioned Doctor Kresner before, and I'm trying to figure out, when we go into this meeting, whenever this next meeting is, are we coming in with names, or are we lifting? Like, how is, how is that gonna work? I truly do believe that right now to sort of, to move from where we are throughout the summer and even opening up school, I think that we need somebody who understands where we are, I think Doctor Kresner would do a fantastic job, seen her work firsthand, I know it would be great. And then I think we have to have this conversation about, are we pulling somebody in to reorg, or are we just pulling someone in? This interim piece is interesting to me, cause I didn't, that was, that, that's come up a couple of times, and I'm, I'm wondering where we are with this reorganization. So I think we do need time to talk about that, cause my thought would be, do, get somebody in place, get our bearing straight to launch a, a full-on search for the next superintendent, and then go from there. But I hear an appetite to sort of do some work in between, but.
And I'm wondering if that June meeting, when we bring someone in to facilitate us, because I gen- I genuinely would like to participate and not facilitate, it would allow you to talk further about where you are, you to talk further about where you are, so we can all actually put this stuff on the table and see where are our common threads, um, and, and what are those next steps? Um, and so I think that that meeting, the second, the second board workshop in June, the agenda review, we could tag it on. Or we could do it as a separate meeting entirely, so that it's not even a part of board workshop, if y'all wanted to just set aside a morning, you know, or a nine to two day, nine to one day, I can talk to, um, I can talk to the facilitators and see how long they think it would take. Um, and we can just, I, we always identify the Thursday after our second board workshop as a day to pick up work, so we could go in and pick that third Thursday, um, up of June as the day to do this, would that be palatable for you guys?
I think that that conversation's gonna need a some focus.
It's a separate.
And, and I think to bringing somebody in, it helps us figure out what kind of person we want, and to Board Member Willie's point, if there are characteristics that board members have identified in a future leader, it doesn't mean that that person, you know, can't you're just looking for that skillset in the long-term, if that's the consensus of the board, but I'm not hearing a full consensus of what we want that beyond six months. And I just know, um, from the work that I do, to go through that process of a sur- search and getting somebody in a contract, it's gonna take up to six months to do that, and so that's why we need that window. But I think that conversation will help us, if we have somebody guide us in identifying our next step.
What I'm hearing from everyone right now, um, is third Thursday, bring the facilitator in, it's a separate and aside, so that we can all take the time to really go deeper into this comment, I'd like to spend some time on this, I wanna hear more about what you're thinking. I, I wanna, I wanna have the time to hear everybody's conversation, so that, you know.
Is that the fifteenth to twenty second?
It's the twenty second, it's the, after the, yeah, it's, it's always the Thursday after the second board workshop. It's by, by board policy, it's at the Thursday after agenda review, it's by board policy.
Do you wanna wait that long to have a conversation?
I'm, I just said that because by board policy, we set that time aside, and I've gotta have time to get somebody here. Y'all can give me an alternate date if you wanted to give me an alternate date, um, but we've gotta have time to get somebody here too, we don't know what the calendars would be for these others.
What date, is it the fifteenth of June, or did you say the twenty fifth?
Nah, by board policy, when we wrote chapter two, we always said that if we had unfinished business, we would pick that business up on the, on the Thursday after agenda review, remember when we did that? And it made it so that all board members who have to travel for work and whatnot, know that that could always be the day we pick up business. And so that's the only reason I suggested it, since I knew it would be clear, cause by board policy, we keep it clear.
I'm wondering, we have a board meeting on June the sixth, and we have just workshop on the thirteenth, and agenda on the twentieth. I'm wondering if our thirteenth, we know everybody's here, we know everybody's calendar is clear, if we have an opportunity there.
I tell you what, I'll do it to, like at one o'clock, um, why don't I look at two dates then? I can look, what?
I was gonna say, why don't we put that Monday to, the twelfth?
The twelfth.
The twelfth.
I will say, I actually have an issue.
You can't, okay, no, I mean, I was just thinking of that week.
Also, if we're planning to enlist FSBA as our facilitator, they have conference, I think I might be the only one going, but the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, I think it would be difficult for their staff to turn around after that big event and be here on the twelfth.
Okay, so why don't I look at the thirteenth from like one to four? But then I'll also have as a backup date, the twenty second, from like nine to noon, is that okay?
That Thursday or not, too?
Fifteenth is, um, we have a groundbreaking.
Yeah, four, but if we're gonna do something in the morning, we would be done.
I have city council down at two o'clock, but I don't know why.
I will say I have it down too, I don't know why, that's interesting, when those happen.
Fifteen, nineteen.
Yeah. So with, okay, I'll check those dates.
It might be that you were trying to put a joint meeting together.
No, I already talked to the new person about that, and it'll be, he's looking at later in August. They haven't given me dates yet, something, I suppose. All right, but I still, so I'm gonna follow on, follow up on those items, um, and a separate and aside, and I've got a couple of potential dates here. Um, I still haven't, we still have the issue though, with item number one of, we would need to take an action to actually do something. My question to you all is if we're going to do that next Tuesday, the twenty-third. OGC has a real definitive dot timeline on this other item. They need to see us, they would need to see us hopefully by then. They just called yesterday, this is recent item, um, it's not like we've been sitting on something just FYI. If we were to, actually, if we were to meet with, if we were to have a meeting at nine o'clock to address the up to six months, could be two months, could be three months, but up to six months, given that language person, and we would have to, I can, I can put that as however you want me to word it, so I can publicly notice that meeting. And then after that, at ten thirty, have the meeting with the Office of General Counsel, and by then, if we've identified someone. Can they be in the shade meeting at that point? No, they can't, cause it wasn't on the public notice, I tried to work it out, it didn't work, sorry. Does that work for you guys, either OGC at nine, and then us at ten thirty to take an action? Or OGC, or, or flip flop, just depending upon, OGC has three lawyers that need to be at this item, so their schedules are interesting.
I would say maybe put them first, just in case we run late, that we're not keeping them, holding them.
And they've said they need about an hour, so I'm gonna do an hour and a half at nine on the twenty-third. And then we would have a meeting, and how, from an agenda item, do you want me to just put it as a selection of a superintendent not to exceed six months to, um, Doc, to Board Member Jones? Reality, you are more correct, there is no such thing as an interim, I just wanted to, I put it there, cause I didn't want anybody to think I was going, you know how the media, and I wanna make it clear, this is a short-term item, this is not long-term.
Do we have a consensus of who we think that's going to be, or we're going to bring names and then vote?
Y'all give me a consensus, I will put the name on it, if y'all don't, um, I will just put it open, y'all let me know where our way.
What's the method for doing that, cause I can give you my name right now.
We can go around the table and do a name and start.
Can I, before we do that, can I just say one thing?
Sure, sure.
I'm struggling a little bit with the point of us having this discussion today, because I think that, I was under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we were contacted by general counsel, you know, if you have anyone, I thought we were gonna be sitting here discussing potentially if any board members had someone. Because I thought the general counsel was reaching out to potential candidates to come in for us to take a look at, and so I'm confused as to why that conversation isn't happening.
Through the chair, I have reached out to two individuals, I don't have contact information for them, but one individual I did, uh, and so I've spoken to him on two different occasions. As last night, including last night, and his suggestion was, and it makes sense, this is, you know, let's see what the board wants to do first. And, and then, that was his recommendation, see what the board wants to do as far as, you know, what timeframes are you looking at? You're looking at two, two people, or you're looking at like three different timeframes with three possible people? And then once we know what the board's desire is there, then let me know. I think kind of the way he liked it with me. The, the other two individuals, I'm not sure at this point how to reach them, I could probably, if, if their former school districts will reveal their contact information, I guess it's public record, but, um, I have, so I haven't, in all canter, have not talked to those two.
Okay, so just to be clear then, there's a potential that right now we could be interviewing two to three different people right now, without facilitating anyone, and we could get the ball rolling between now and, just to, I just wanna throw that out there, there's a, there's a potential of that happening?
I, I have been given three names.
Okay.
I, I think the one, the, the one person I have been in contact with, who lives a good ways off, and so there would not be the interest in like a permanent, you know. and, and it would be a, a short-term, a very short-term thing. And also had mentioned the possibility, which I did not mention earlier, which was, you know, insofar as we wanna use, utilize a consultant to assist somebody, that that would be also something that he would consider, so.
And I may, if I may, take some whatever in this. I saw those people as potentially being up to eighteen months, maybe, um, because I knew there was some thought of possibly a shorter term, longer, shorter term. Let me define it as longer, shorter term. And so, I, I guess I'm seeing an immediate, let's handle this, and then look at, are we wanting somebody for eighteen months to two years, or we're wanting someone for ten years? And, you know, how, and then, I think, I, I got the impression those people are looking for that. Does that make sense?
Right, oh yeah.
So, that part I understand. I was just thinking about the focus of this discussion today. I thought that we were gonna be having a discussion about potential, like hit the ground running today, is what I was under the impression.
Oh, okay.
Was happening because of the conversations I've had with Mr. Poole about potential.
Okay.
Um, candidates. So that's why I'm confused as to where we're going with this today.
Okay. Okay.
Vice Chair Pearson.
Um, just looking at, that today's the sixteenth of May, and we need a, we need someone in the superintendent's position on June sixth. If we were to reach an agreement with someone, I'm not sure someone could move, could find a place, could move and rent and be moved in, um, by the first of June, to be able to start on the sixth of June. So I think we're looking at someone for a period of time, more than likely in-house. We have our conversation, and we let someone lead through the discussion of, are we looking for, um, a second semi-permanent, 'cause we can't call them interim, semi-permanent person? What we're looking for that person to do, how long, you know, up to a certain amount of time? And then we're also looking at what our search looks like for our permanent superintendent. Um, so I think we are looking for three people in blocks of time to serve specific purposes. But in reality, what I'm understanding is, come June sixth, we will not have anyone in the superintendent's chair, and that our most immediate need is to have someone in that chair on June sixth.
Board Member Carney.
Um, through the chair, Mr. Poole, this one person that you had spoken to?
Yes, ma'am.
What's his timeline? Do you have an idea? If, if, if the board was agreeable to have somebody come in and, and present himself, herself to us, um, what was this person's timeline as to start, to be willing to start?
And, and through the chair, I don't know.
Okay.
Because we kind of ended it, the first discussion was, if that opportunity presented itself, is that something that you would be willing to engage with? And, and that sort of centered on the duration, with the period more like, you know, he was like, eh, six months, maybe, you know, um, but not really any more than that. The second conversation was more centered upon, you know, on further reflection, let's find out what the board wants to do first, and that way I'm better able to discuss. Does that make sense? Better able to discuss the time.
He's wanting to hear the discussion that we're gonna have on the June thirteenth or the twenty second, to better decide whether he really wants to consider.
Right, and I, so.
Got it, okay.
As far as help quickly, I don't know, 'cause we just didn't get to that point.
There'd have to be a contract.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I understand that we need to, right now, we need a fix, and then we need a long-term. Like that's, I'm in the same space. I, I, I get that. I just, having those six weeks between June fifth and July fourteenth, I wanna make the best use of our time and be proactive.
And, and I guess for me, I don't, I see the June fifth, that we as a board need to designate someone, because our superintendent that we've now signed this retirement agreement with is in surplus. And honestly, I think for the public, we need to make a decision.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, I agree, between that time period, we need to make a decision, but I also wanna make sure that we're being proactive and doing the work to get, get that midterm worked on, sorry.
We can, we can do it for up to six months, and it could last for six weeks or six months, I, you know. Board Member Willie, were you gonna add?
Yeah, to the chair, I think it's, I don't know, it seems odd that we're like interviewing people, or like, inquiring about people. So that's one. But two, like, if there's names that you have, I mean, we just put out Dr. Christner's name, I think we're gonna be going around. So that should be a name that you, you put out, if, if, if that's what you want the conversation to be. So that's, I think.
Why don't I, so why don't I do it this way? I'm gonna frame the item for the twenty third as, um, selection of superintendent not to exceed up to six months, and we can take our nominations from the floor, can't we? I mean, is there any?
That's what your deadline is.
Is that, okay. It's good to have coaches on either side of you. Look at this. Um, so we'll do it that way, and not put a name in it, and, um, we'll, we'll make it happen that way. Um, so I'll go ahead and arrange for Office General Counsel for next Tuesday, and for this. Um, and, um, we'll do it so that Office General Counsel was first, and I like what you said as well, taking that thought into consideration.
Question, to the chair, we did it from the floor last time when we were doing what companies?
We did make nominations of who we want to serve, superintendent have to, not be.
When we picked it, Dr. Willis.
Got it.
I have, but I have to set it up publicly notice it as an agenda item for action.
Right.
Today is not set up for an action.
No, no, last time. I'm just trying to figure out sort of, so we have the most information. If we're doing it from the floor, and then we're deciding right then, for example, if somebody lists a name, like, I have no idea who this person is, are we gonna have, like, how do we create the space to understand who the person is, or like, what they're?
What I would suggest is, how about this? Can we do this? Um, and please keep me in compliance with everything we are, have to stay in compliance with. If someone were to suggest someone, is it possible for you to get that information, and for you to share it like an agenda item with us, or how does, how would that work?
And I was gonna suggest that, just use me as a clearinghouse, if you will. Just give me the information, and then I can hold that and then disseminate it to everybody.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
I need a sentence.
Is, is there, so, when, when I got a text, I think it was a, was a text or call to say, do you have names? I reached out to someone who is aware of retired superintendents in the state of Florida, and that was where I got names that I sent. And I don't know if anybody else responded to the text message or whatever. Um, would it be possible from, well, however many names you got, to contact those individuals and say, would you be available on this day, on June, starting June sixth, right? And if so, could they send the resume, and then that resume could be sent to the board members? Um, and that could be looked at. We've talked about one in-house name, but then that way, I think that kind of answers, because I, I will say, with what Board Member Carney said, I thought we were gonna have a little bit of information. I, like I said, every name I submitted is of retired superintendent from the state of Florida. Um, and who had some, um, who were strong leaders from larger districts. So, um, and I don't know who, who anybody else sent, but, um, that's where I would start, because then that would give us.
So you'll forward.
An opportunity to prepare.
And do y'all recall, let me do, Vice Chair Pearson has a comment, but just real quick on this. Do y'all recall, did you receive information ahead of time on your candidates that you did from the floor, or no? How did, how did y'all do it?
I don't think we did. I think we, there were a number of names that were thrown out, uh, Pearl Roger, Dr. Christner, um, uh, Dr. Willis. There was several names, and then we eliminated, we voted. Pearl couldn't do it because she was already dropped, so, uh, but there were a number of candidates, all in-house. I think historically, we've done it in-house because of the transition period. You, you, you need someone who, uh, I'm of the opinion that we need someone in-house. That's, that's my belief. Historically, that's what we've done with Nat, uh,
Matt Snyder.
Matt Snyder, Dr. Snyder, with Dr. Willis, somebody who understood our system here in Texas.
But we did talk to a man from South Florida who came in. Um, so we did have two, and, and decided, so, I mean, we did have, we would have had a resume or, or, or something. And I mean, I think first is the interest of if it, you can do it immediately, 'cause that would probably weed out a lot of people. And then to see the, to, to get the resume, and I think.
I'm getting to you, Vice Chair Pearson. Vice Chair Pearson, yes.
Uh, pretty important to know the terms of whatever the contract would be, what they want. Um, 'cause someone could want salary, they could want housing, they could want, you know, in an interim, if someone's moving here, they could want housing. I'm, I'm thinking about the interim superintendent for new school, or new college.
Yeah.
In Sarasota. And, uh, that was a pretty big price tag with housing and car allowance and, um, club allowance. There, there are quite a few things built into that interim contract, so I think it's important to know also what someone would be expecting as well.
So when you vet each of them before you send it, if they have a, a certain threshold of a non-negotiable, can you find that out and also make us aware of that? If there is a absolute, I won't come for less than this, this dollar amount, we need to know what that is. Or I won't come without a car, district car, or whatever. Just let us know what those minimum non-negotiables for them, and then the rest, we can figure out on the backside. But what is, won't come unless the following. Can you do that as well?
And our salary set.
Yeah, salary is where it is. Salary is where it is, where it is.
Salary set.
Um, alright, anything else? And so at least, uh, we've improved the process a little bit, 'cause we're gonna get this ahead of time, so that works out nicely. Um, alright, anything else on this item? I, I, I just really appreciate everyone, the good dialogue, thank you. Um, we're just in a unique spot, and that June sixth, it's a new, new chapter, new day.
So, yes.
No, no, I think I was gonna ask the same.
So if there's someone that you wanna submit, this clarification, that is gonna go to Mr. Poole. And then Mr. Poole is gonna reach out to that individual, find out timeframe, uh, contract, expect, expectations. Um, and then you're, are we going to receive any information before the meeting? So that we know who?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I will send that out to everybody.
Okay.
So you have a chance to, unless.
No, I think that's good.
I, I would send that out to everybody before the meetings, so you'd have a chance to review it and consider it.
I'm gonna come to Board Member Jones, and then I have one request on that.
I just wanna make, make sure I'm clear, on the twenty-third, a week from today, we will meet. At nine, to do the shade meeting.
We're gonna do. Correct.
Followed by the.
Ten thirty, ten thirty for us.
Okay.
Yeah, um, the only thing I'm gonna ask you all, is, it's all well and good to submit someone. Please make sure that they're really intere-, because he's gonna have to vet these people, and we can't, and you need to let them know that if they're truly interested, they need to call him back, and stay on the phone with him, and let him get the information, 'cause it's, we're, we're now making him an HR director. Um, and we need to make sure that we're not just throwing names, and we don't know if they're even interested or not. That's just not fair. Um, Board Member Hirsch.
I have a question. I have heard Dr. Christner's name multiple times in this conversation. Um, would, um, it be good to include her resume in that pile?
I'm, I will, I will work on that. I will, she'll, I'll submit it.
I'm just, I'm just thinking so that you kinda see everything.
I will be the board member that does that one, 'cause there's that.
I was gonna do that too.
Okay, well, then Board Member Jones, go, go. Yeah, I will say I submit, I sent that one already. Um, okay, let's move to governance, and let me give some quick updates on governance. Um, and then we'll go around the table. Just, uh, you all tasked me with writing a letter to Douglas Anderson Foundation, making them aware of the situation, um, in regards to the third-party investigation, what the two prongs of that investigation, investigation is, and just saying to them, we want to make you aware of it, so that if you are in any way spending money on staff, you are aware that this is whatever. Um, and so I just wanted to let you know that letter is drafted. I actually spoke to a member of their foundation board, he knows that I'm sending it to them. Um, and it's actually, should be on my desk waiting for signature, it's done. Um, so that is gonna happen this afternoon, or we're gonna get a copy of it? I will have it in the board run. Um, yeah, that was, that was why I was gonna say this, so that y'all will know you'll get a copy of it. Uh, it does thank them for the good work. I mean, they contribute about seven hundred thousand dollars a year to the, to the school, so it thanks them. They're in the process of building an amphitheater for children right now over there. Um, so it does thank them for the good work. It just says, as your employing staff, be aware. And it does put onus on us to send the final report to them, um, once it's done by the investigators. Um, the movement of the main building, moving off this and off, um, to somewhere else, I know. Everybody's been reviewing those proposals, um, individually. I have requested for the workshop after agenda review in June, um, a, uh, presentation updating us as to where we are, and what, why are we stalled? Um, what's the problem moving forward? So just FYI, um, I've requested that presentation for the second board workshop of June.
June.
Uh-huh, second board, after agenda review. I wanted to apologize to you, um, on the notion of, I set the two last weeks of July as, um, weeks that were going to be completely clear and void. I know people are going out of the country, people are going all kinds of places. And elected to remember, state law requires us to have those financial meetings that only last, what, ten minutes, maybe? If that, um, but, so those had to get scheduled, that's why you got the invites. We will make sure, hopefully there will be at least four of us present to come in here. You remember, those are kind of perfunctory, they, and last year, we only had, I think there were two people that were missing at those meetings. But anyway, we'll work through, and I apologize for that. I did forget that those were happening. Um, so, um, but by state law, they have to be during those timeframes. Um, and that's all for me. Um, so I will go to Board Member Jones, anything from you for governance? Board Member Willie.
Uh, for board policy next week, I'm gonna, um, I'd like to bring up two point two six. On, uh, so I'd like to add two point two six. I've already spoken with Mr. Poole. I'm gonna try to meet with Mr. McGuffey as well. In our, some of the last meetings we've had, the emergency meetings, um, members of the public brought up that our script, and I've had emails about this also, our script does not match our board policy regard, regarding not mentioning names of people. So I think that's something we need to discuss and clean up. Um, there's also an issue of, uh, preferential treatment for elected officials or former elected officials. In the agenda for our regular board meetings, we have a spot for elected officials, but when we have a different kind of meeting that has public comment, that's not outlined, and we need to, we need to discuss that. And the third area that I'd like to discuss is the wave cards, um, streamlining that process, whether it be outlining a number, a maximum number of words that can be on it, or a topic, or an agenda item from the agenda, something, uh, because the cards are getting to be quite long, and it, I feel like it may take me more time to read what's on the card, than the minute the person would be allotted. And I think that violates the spirit of, of what we're trying to do there. So, um, those are three things I would like to discuss, um, regarding two point two six.
Board Member Hirsch, anything for you?
Um, no, I would just like to say that I did have a conversation with Dr. Christner. Um, she remembered some insight on mentioning of names, and I would encourage each board member to have a conversation with Dr. Christner as to what caused that, because, um, I think it would just give some insight and for future consideration, before we go into that policy meeting. Um, just 'cause you got, 'cause it wasn't something I thought about, and I was like, oh, okay, I can see why. But again, sometimes you start something, and maybe you can drop it, but I, I think it does, I think it would heed us and give us some caution, um, to understand that background, yep.
Then I'll speak about language to match.
Yep, well, so, yeah, get the information and.
Reason I didn't have a problem with, of the chair is always had to do prerogative to ask members not to use names or call, call out names. Uh, but we need to address it in policy, but the chair has to, that's the question.
Um, and I've stayed away from it because of FERPA and some contractual. Um, that being said, um, anything else for the good of the order? No? I just wanna say thank you. Um, today, the tough conversation today, and I just appreciate everybody. It seems like we're trying to find that middle ground everywhere, and, um, I look forward to next week's meeting, but also the, the meeting, um, later in the month, so really talk about where we're headed, so. Um, at this point, the, the Duval County School Board moved to adjourn the meeting. I'll ask for a motion. I have a motion, Vice Chair Pearson, a second from, on Board Member Jones, all those in good favor, signal by saying yay?
Yeah.
Day.
Any opposed? Um, am I now spoke? Um, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
She's in charge, or she's just retired. She's in rush, or she's just retired, so she's been out.
Two hundred forty-five dollars. That was almost the same, are you kidding me?